I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield for October 20th, 2011. And please go roll.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, here. Mr. Seimer, here. Just be more. Uh, Mr. Lamb. Ms. Garrison, here. Mr. Fracassi, here. Mr. Fraser, if you have five members present.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for the questions and answers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have some presentations. The first presentation is recognition of the Field Zone participation in the Race of Cups, uh, the Community Excellence Awards competition. Um, I would like to, uh, invite those persons from the, uh, Field Zone that are in the audience to come forward.
Scott Griffin.
Here he comes.
Okay.
This evening, uh, we'd like to recognize those persons that took part in, uh, the Race of Cups. On May 20th, 2011, the Field Zone participated in the Excellence Award competition held at the Michigan Municipal League that were named the winners from Region One. The group then represented the region for the state competition at the league's annual convention held in Grand Rapids from October 5th through October 2nd. And I was there and it was a, uh, really neat event. It was probably one of the best, uh, Michigan Municipal League conferences that they've had in the past few years. Uh, representing the, the Field Zone at Michigan Municipal League was Linda Neighbors, uh, who is the chairperson, uh, she, per, executive director. Peter Banks, um, and Roy Bell, who also was there. It's a town this evening, so he couldn't be there. And Linda had, uh, her husband, uh, Bill Neighbors, but they're also working just as hard as all the rest of the folks, uh, trying to elicit votes to, uh, bring Southfield and the Field Zone in number one. Unfortunately, they had, uh, there was another group there that were, uh, Thompson Donuts. Now that's, uh, you know, uh, and they, uh, they were formidable competitors and, uh, unfortunately, they, uh, uh, they did win. But, uh, our team represented Southfield and the Field Zone excellently. Uh, Ms. Neighbors made the presentation and she did an excellent job of presentation. And I was around trying to buttonhole people to vote for the Field Zone and people were saying to me, yeah, I know the Thompson Donuts were kind of fancy, but, uh, the Field Zone really did something for the young people. So I know that a lot of people voted for, uh, the, uh, Field Zone, but apparently the, the Thompson gave up more Donuts. But it was a, a great experience and we are extremely proud of the job that you get. Uh, Scott Griffin is also here, who is, uh, I think he's the board chair and really the driving engine that keeps the Field Zone chugging along. So, uh, again, we'd like to congratulate you for the wonderful job that you did at Michigan Municipal League and thanks so much for representing Southfield as well as you did. I have a couple of other presentations that I'd like to make. Councilwoman Lenny Taylor, if you would join me at the podium. Also at the Michigan Municipal League, the, uh, uh, people that had completed different levels of the Electoral Officials Academy were recognized and given flags. Uh, Ms. Taylor couldn't attend, so I asked if I could break her flag now and make a presentation to her this evening. So I do have her flag that I want to give her and I will read it. It says, "The Electoral Officials Academy. The Michigan Municipal League hereby certifies that Lenny Taylor has successfully completed all the requirements as set forth by the Electoral Officials Academy Advisory Board for the Level One Education Award of the Electoral Officials Academy and is signed by Dan Hill Martin on 10/6/2011." Congratulations. I do know that when I got my, uh, when I got my first one, it just so happened that we were, it was the cycle that we were at, uh, Mackinac Island and it was in the big room and, uh, um, I recall right, there was a song, a song. We're not going to sing the song. But, uh, it was, to me, it was really great to have that, uh, be recognized of all the people that were in the incident. So, uh, it's just too bad that you couldn't have been there because I'm sure that it would have given you the extra thrill. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right, sure. I also have another presentation of Ms. Garrison, if you would have joined me at Janet Garrison has, uh, chosen not to seek reelection because of some family concerns and she wants to be closer to her husband who, uh, uh, was relocated to Kansas.
Wichita.
Wichita, Wichita, Kansas. Um, for two years, uh, I have seen you grow. I have really seen you grow as, as a council person. When you first came in, you're just like, uh, all of you, all of the other council people that are new, uh, trying to find your way around and although you've had quite a bit of experience as a, as an official in the union, so it wasn't entirely random of you. But, uh, uh, I have seen you grow a great deal and I want to wish you the very best and would like to give you this to.
I love her.
Okay. Also the Electoral Officials, your counterparts at the council and the other Electoral Officials have a stat. So, uh, congratulations, if you'd like to say something?
You called me off guard. Um, but I've never had a loss for a pewter. Uh, for those who may not know, I guess you would know now, um, as, um, I might already stated, uh, I am not ready for reelection on my council terms. Uh, my husband, who's a quality engineer, has been relocated out of the state to the central Midwest part of the country, actually Wichita, so quite a change. I have been gone for almost a year now, so I will be joining him and I really can't wait to get there. I would like to say that it has been my honor and my privilege to serve my city council. I believe that I did stay true to my campaign pledges of, uh, being an independent thinker and making decisions based on data and on emotion and staying in contact with its constituents. So I would like to give you a five minute well, uh, at least for a few years, who knows what the future holds with what's going on in the country in regards to engineers in Michigan and other parts. Uh, but it has been my honor also and privilege to work with, um, council members and mayor and attorney and staff. Um, I don't know if I've grown so much over the last six years because I had quite a bit of experience, but I think that we have gotten to know each other a little bit better and that's something that's needed to become more new. It takes a moment to get to know each other and to be able to work more collaboratively and more aggressively. Um, and that's what I think that I have done. I think that I have served the city and the residents well. There are many people that could tell you many stories. Um, and I hope that citizens also think that, uh, I stayed true to my campaign promises. And so for at least a few years, I, I will be in Wichita, uh, which is just a hidden jewel of the city, joining my husband and I would look forward to, um, joining up with them. So this is going to be my last regular council meeting, um, and, um, we do have a little more, I have a committee of the whole, but I thank you very much. So I will send the flowers. You're going to make me cry. So in fact, thank you very much.
We have one appointment this evening and it's a reappointment to the Fire and Police Repairment System, Board of Justices. Uh, Ms. Taylor, do you want to head left, please?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
As the Chair of the Board of the Michigan Committee, I sit on Kent Seimer and I would like to also join me on that board. We, uh, met and discussed the reappointment of Ms. Audrey Harvey. Ms. Harvey has demonstrated faithful confidence and consistency on this board since 1998. She has been diligent and conscientious in her involvement in special board projects and initiatives. Ms. Harvey comes with high recommendations to continue her service. If approved by this honorable body, her tenure of service will be, will go through October 13th, 2013.
I approve the reappointment to the Fire and Police Repairment System, Board of Justices, Ms. Audrey Harvey.
The board.
It's been moved by Mr. Seimer, supported by Ms. Fracassi, that we reappoint, uh, to the Fire and Police Repairment System, Board of Justices, Ms. Audrey Harvey. Are we prepared to vote? All those favoritism members saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Ms. Harvey, are you in the, in the audience this evening? We have three sets of minutes to approve this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Fracassi.
I move the regular meeting of August 22nd, the committee of the whole meeting of September 12th, the special meeting of September 12th.
The board.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2011, the committee of the whole meeting of September 12th, 2011, and the special meeting of September 12th, 2011, which have been amended. Page three, there was a typo that has been, that corrects, so that's, uh, part of the record. Are there any discussions? Are we prepared to vote? All those favoritism members saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. The next item on our agenda is, uh, communications and we have a request for recognition from Pamela Gero. Now, people come to the microphone, but don't, I don't want you to say anything right now, even including your name right now, because I mean, this is not part of your five minutes. But, uh, one time recently, you, uh, you asked me, what does the, uh, Southfield Standard mean? And, um...
Do you want me to wait until you do that? If I have to.
Well, yeah, you can wait. But I'm, I'm speaking to you and, and the audience. Um, you asked about, what does the Southfield Standard mean? And...
I said, "What is it?"
What is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is it? And what it is, and again, I'm speaking from my point of view because I think it's, uh, it's in everyone's heart and mind what it means to them. The Southfield Standard, to me, is a journey. It's not a, it's not a goal. It's one of the things that keeps shifting. And when I was a kid, the best way I can explain this, what the standard means to me, is my parents had a standard for the Fraser's. And theoretically, my parents would say to me, one of my parents would say to me, "Frasers don't act like that when they're in a home." Or, "Frasers don't do those kind of things." It was an unsaid standard that I eventually learned to understand and grow into. I see the standards for the city of Southfield the same way. There are 71,000 people plus that live in the city of Southfield. They all have their own idea of what the Southfield Standard is. When we, uh, when we see a piece of paper on the ground, if we pick it up and put it in a garbage can, that's one standard. If we walk past it and leave it hanging on the ground for someone else to pick up, that's a different standard. Each day, because we know that we're, no one is perfect. We do the best that we can on a day-to-day basis, knowing full well that some days we don't do as, as much as we wanted to or as good a job as we wanted to. But that doesn't stop us from coming back the next day, trying to, to do better. Tonight, we saw community pride award. All the winners have set a standard for how they want their home and their grounds to look. Each year, they come back and they've done a little bit more to make it even better than it was this year. So, and there are other people that are watching what went on this evening and are deciding that maybe I ought to do some more things to improve myself and my, and my own, my grounds, or just the city of Southfield. So, the Southfield Standard is one that I can't describe, but I know it when I see it. And so, I want to say to you that the Southfield Standard is a journey, it's not a target. So, for that, uh, if you'd like to come to the microphone, give your name and address with the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Pamela Gero, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I'm glad you brought up the Southfield Standard because I'm going to give you some examples and I want you to tell me if this is the journey that represents the standard that we're trying to uphold. And I spoke about it previously in the meeting. There have been some high-ranking law enforcement officers inquiring about me, who I am, what about me. So I've been doing some inquiring of my own. And I think to have an acting chief at a council meeting as well as a uniform officer is an abuse of power. We meet all of our officers on the streets because crime has escalated in the city of Southfield with all of these job losses and other economic changes going on. And our officers are supposed to protect and serve, but we had two officers and a union president that we didn't do right by. That union president came here and spoke about some serious matters that I think the public needs to know about and that needs to be explored and investigated if we're going to be soon picking, uh, Chief of Police. One of those allegations was that one female officer, our only black female officer in this city was, uh, there was an attempt to take away 6% of her pay. Now, there was a grievance filed and it didn't come through. But another really embarrassing situation was that there was another officer who had an impeccable 21-year, um, career with the city of Southfield in terms of law enforcement. Now, I stood to be corrected when I said that his pension was denied. His pension was not denied for the official record, but what you did deny is you denied his badge. You denied his CPL and you denied him that access to his badge when you retired. Now, that's not a Southfield Standard when that allegation was not looked into. What you denied his CPL and access to his badge for was for a flashlight. Now, when you guys negotiated your contract with the police department, it said in that contract that each officer is allowed a $400 allowance and that allowance can be carried over. You allow an officer to inquire, you allowed a high-ranking acting chief to inquire about his payout when that was not his immediate superior. So there's something wrong with that. And that $400 allowance can carry over. So that was not a Southfield Standard. Now, I know Mr. Charette and I talked and he said that he was going to do the situation right and acknowledge his officer. You should do it publicly. Whatever you do for that officer, it should be on TV so all of the residents that watched it and were in here that night for the audit and, and the auditorium for that meeting, we want to see it on TV. And I definitely want to see it on TV. Mr. Fraser, you said that what happened was bad policy, when in fact, there's no policy against that. So how can we say, we have a standard about a lot of things. We have a standard about the, um, the international festival. It was awesome. I came two days, for the first time, I came two days to the three-day festival. That's a standard. But we don't have a standard about everything. And what we don't have a standard about, we can't be afraid to say we don't and to try to make it right. Now, I also want to ask you, Mr. Charette, with the official record...
You can talk to me.
Let me finish.
Well, talk to me.
And stop being so disrespectful. I know there's an attempt to take my time, but you didn't give me a chance to say, "Through the chair." So make the correction, make the correction at the appropriate time. That's why I continue to talk sometimes because I think you intentionally tried to take my time, but okay, I'm going to get to the point and I can finish it if I don't get a chance at another meeting.
You're using my right now, so...
Now, through the chair, Mr. Charette was supposed to be investigating, um, the allegations that an acting chief was talking to officers during, um, negotiation of contracts. Now, Councilwoman Garrison, you worked for a union, I think that's a violation. And if it's a violation, are you looking into that? We're going to be selecting the Chief of Police in this city and those things need to be looked at. There's an allegation that an acting chief bought the vice of time recorder. Is that going to be looked into? And are you going to give a finding to that investigation prior to selecting the chief? And here's another recent, uh, issue. A resident in the city of Southfield applied for a gun permit and that gun, gun permit was denied. Don't know why, don't really care, but I'm sure you guys are going to be looking into it. This, this denial is able to be appealed through the acting chief of police or one of them, because we have three acting police chiefs. Because this resident attempted to reach out to find out why was this permit denied, this acting chief accused this resident of harassing and stalking. Now, anytime a resident is calling the city of Southfield for anything, that's job security for the people here. Because if you're, if you're not answering questions, then you don't have time.
And I give you the first second.
No, you did, but you took the first second. So I'm going to continue by saying, this acting chief issued a law where this gentleman is stalking and harassing because he tried to find out about a denial of a gun permit. Now, is that the type of behavior that we want an acting chief to have if we're going to appoint him as chief? That is not. That is not.
Would you please stop waving the microphone?
That is not the type of behavior that we want to have an acting chief to have. And anytime you're going to...
You can't wave it in the microphone.
Anytime you're going to disrupt my time and tell me that something is not appropriate... Yeah, you need to take a five-minute break on that because I think that's an appropriate thing to do so that you can cool off. And I want you to stop taking my time by telling me that somebody is not right. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a request for recognition from, uh, Mr. Richard Melzer. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address with a, for the record. We have five minutes.
Richard Melzer, 20850 in Southfield. Uh, good evening. Uh, I wanted to appear before council tonight to publicly thank the council and other city officials for taking up the issue of smart meters to let our viewing audience know the last we've ever due deliberation. The city council passed a smart meter resolution. Southfield now joins a growing list of communities asking the public service division to further consider issues of health and safety along with personal privacy as they relate to this new smart meter technology. Southfield is also asking that residents have opt-out option and even reinstallation of their old meters if desired, as has been mandated in California and Maine. For those who don't know about the utility meter concern, it's looking at that these new smart meters really are computers that are always on and frequently broadcast residents' electrical usage pattern back to DTE, our electric utility company, using radio frequency wireless technology. Also take note that the gas and water utilities want to install their own smart meters at a later date. For those that want to know, uh, want to find out more, they should do an internet computer search on the phrase, "stop smart meters." And for people who have not yet had their electric meter switched to the new smart meter and who would like to keep their old meter, they can call DTE's field contractor accompanied by the name of Public Utilities of America at 877-241-4922 and request an exemption. I'll repeat that in a moment. Let me also acknowledge two Southfield residents who, along others, helped bring this issue before council. Thanks go out to Stephanie English and Adesige, I can crudely further help. Again, DTE's field contractor is Public Utilities of America and they can be reached at 877-241-4922. Lastly, so that city residents can read or obtain a copy of the smart meter resolution, I'd like to ask the city clerk through the chair, where at the Southfield website will the resolution reside? And for your consideration, I suggest that for a period of time, you appear on the homepage as a news worthy item, as has been done in other communities. Yeah, thank you all. If you would look at that under consideration. Is it, is it on the...
If I can answer that question, it is under the, um, council section on the left-hand side, you'll see minutes. On the very bottom, it will say "resolution" under the resources. If you click on the "resolution" tab, it will take you right to the smart meter resolution. So it is on, on the website.
That's very, very clear. Our viewing audience appreciates that. They could...
I'm wondering if, sometime we have highlights on the, on the homepage, if we might, um, since this is new, uh, it'd be easier to find somewhere you would have to look under "council minutes."
And, and we can put it on the homepage. Um, there's just one problem with the homepage, as new news comes on and...
Well, it's...
It, it, sometimes it doesn't last more than a day. We can put it on there. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Sure. The next item on our agenda is a request for recognition from Yolanda Hayes. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address with the record. We have five minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Yolanda Hayes, I reside at 24501, Southfield, Michigan. Um, I think I have a couple of things I want to talk about, but I want to respond to some things that you talked about about standards. Um, my mother was a teacher and we grew up with standards in our household as well. And understanding that we always had, you don't care dirty laundry out in the streets. And I think that that can apply to our city as well and maybe if the... And I think that that can apply to our city as well and maybe if the good citizens of Southfield remember that that there is something that should be kept behind doors to talk about at the appropriate time and appropriate place. And also, my mother taught us that it is rude, very rude, to talk when other people are talking. And it is something that we should all learn to do, respect each other. This world will be a much better place if we respect each other. And, uh, as a Christian person myself, that may not perfect, but what it does mean that you live by a standard. Thank God for forgiveness, but under that same rule, we have to have a standard as a Christian person. We can't make out of a standard. You're not a Christian. You're speaking in a standard. And we have to examine ourselves daily. And if we find that we need help, we should get help. And if we're in denial, we have to listen to those authorities, respect those authorities, and also respect our elders, even if we don't like them and if we don't feel like them. And here's a saying that goes, "All of it is necessary for the triumph of evil," is that good men and women do nothing. And I'm here to urge the good men and women in Southfield to come out if you can't make the council meetings, to watch them. So, when you can come out, come before the podium. Come say some good things about our city because you're never going to be watching. There are people that want to live here, that they want to buy a home here, and they may need to see some good and some hate fifteen from a person speaking. We have homes in our neighborhoods for sale. I would love to have good neighbors, but I would love for them to see good representation of our city. And even with this podium, I would like for anybody that comes forth to respect this podium. It is an honor and a purpose to come before the council to speak and I think we should respect ourselves, our city, whether we agree with policy or not, when we come before this council, decide and speak. It is very important that you watch what you say and who you say to. And, um, there's another scripture that goes, "Try to come before a fall." So, when you get so full of yourself that you think it's all about you, I might want to get you some helmet here because when you fall, you will fall hard. You know, here's only one person that's gonna judge us all, but we do need to examine what we do. I like this city. I moved here thirteen years ago. I'll continue to stay here for as long as I can and I would do my best, not urging other people to their best, to do their best, to represent this city well with what they say, how they live, how they act, and what they do. When I serve on boards, I'm not seeking a fortune to write for one. I seek to serve. I serve as one who gives of his time and his energy, not for selfish gain. I've always been taught whatever I do to do my best, that I teach my kids best, and you serve where you live, you give of your time, that is given back to the community of which you live. And I would close in saying, I really mean it, if you do not have anything good to say, there's no reason to really be up here saying anything else. And I would love to see the laws of the world enacted and certain things happen up here that shouldn't have happened. I'd like to see that in place right away because at some point, the morale will be so low if this continues and people will not regard this as a place to want to be respected here with this. Thank you.
I would just like to say, I didn't realize that you and I have the same mother. I had that same lesson from Dr. Meep about saying things outside the house. It's been long outside the house. The next item on our agenda is a request for recognition from Mr. Gregory Keeler. If you would come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. We have five minutes.
You can get shot, okay? Grant Keeler, twenty-five one seven zero Circle Drive. Um, since the last meeting in Lawrence Tech had the approval, there's been a home invasion of my next-door neighbor's home. My house, I've had somebody come up there and trespass and I guess they called code enforcement saying that, uh, my vehicle was inoperative. Me and Jerry had a chance to speak and then I found out the only thing he was talking about was the flat tire. I thought they were saying that somebody came up there and tried stealing my vehicle because they didn't have the authorization to try it starting. And he said it did not work or inoperable. So, I asked a question whether or not I was on surveillance because of that. My mailbox has been gone into. There are no, uh, street signs at the end of my street that says Circle Drive is no longer there since the meeting. There are no street lights on our street. So, when you put this door on there and you put more traffic on there, we have no lights at all. Um, LTU or somebody, let's take away from LTU. Somebody has been afterwards decided they would start setting signs in people's front yards. And I had a sign that I re-pulled out of my front yard because I'm like, I didn't tell nobody they were authorized to stick a sign in my front yard. And I should say that my vehicle sits a hundred and sixty-five feet from the street. That's the distance. So, give or tell that the tire is flat? No, I don't think so. The pictures that I gave you, that you have in front of you, show that the last meeting we were here, what it looked like coming from Lawrence Tech dormitory. And then the second picture shows tire tracks leading from the dormitory coming to Circle Drive. So, when I told you it was a drive-through, now you can see the fact that it's a drive-through. You got a picture of before, you voted, and a picture of after you voted, that is now a drive-through or bypass from the dormitory to get to our street. And you can see that there was heavy machinery, not any light machinery coming through there. Um, I was hoping that my neighbor would come here because that was the house I was broken into at that time. And do we have the right to live in peace on Circle Drive? Or do I have to spend the next fifty years coming here each month saying, "This is what happened. This is what's going on"? What is the appropriate amount of trash left in our front yard? Since that question was asked to one of my neighbors. If it's not right for one of the middle scoops or high scoops that near somebody else's house to dump trash in their yard, it shouldn't be right for it to be dumped in our yard. Is there an adequate number that somebody has for me to say, "Okay, two days, three days, four days, five days, six days"? What is the appropriate amount to be dumped in our yard? Shouldn't have to have that at all. And that's all I have to say. Oh, Lawrence Tech is leasing the dormitory. They don't own the dormitory, so it's not Lawrence Tech is doing this. And you're saying that we will not have charter students coming in here because they will be bringing people from our community in here? But Lawrence Tech is doing the same thing. This sounds like hypocrisy to me to say that charter students can't do this, but Lawrence Tech can do the same thing. Charter students are doing it. You said, we offered a couple of years ago, we said no more churches because of what the church was gonna bring in here and what it was going to do to the neighborhood. But Lawrence Tech is doing the same thing. You told Golden Corral no to coming in because of what they were gonna do to the community. Lawrence Tech is already doing it. It's not about what will happen possibly. This is what's happening right now. This is what was happening beforehand. And the whole community came out and told you beforehand, and I don't believe it's gonna stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
You allow demonstrations freely. What is the right-
Um, so, do you have, there's a question?
I, I have two questions. Um, in the case that one of your neighbors had a home invasion-
Yes.
Did they break in or were they in the house and someone broke in the house while they were there?
Well, the police got there and there was the vehicle there. They did get the license plate number of the vehicle. I did call my neighbor about the invasion into the house. My-
But they weren't there?
They weren't there. Police did not catch the person inside the house.
We're looking more at the break-in, okay? And also-
Um, well, the reason why I use the word "home invasion" is because "home invasion" does not mean that you broke anything to get in. Break-in means that you broke something. Invasion means that you don't live there, you weren't authorized to come in, so thereby you have invaded that house. Two different rules, two different laws.
Okay, so my question was, were they at home when there was a home invasion?
No.
Okay. Um, also, the car that you mentioned, um, because we do have an ordinance here in Southfield regarding cars sitting in driveways with flat tires. Did you have a car sitting in the driveway with flat tires and it's so-
It is-
How many tires were flat? And how long was the car sitting there with flat tires?
Yes, it slowly. Jerry came out there when he told me that that's all the ordinance was, was the flat tire as opposed to inoperable. When I get the word "inoperable," I'm thinking the vehicle does not drive, so he tried to steal the vehicle. But when he told me that, went outside for the area. Real vehicles have slow leaks.
Okay, so how long, okay, and that's what really is like inoperable, is flat tires. You have an ordinance against cars sitting in driveways, um, for periods of time with flat tires. So, once you're notified with this letter, it's giving you an opportunity to correct that, um-
Now, once Jerry told me it was with a flat tire, I went outside and asked Jerry if he wanted to come over and watch the area.
So, that the tires are going over flat and the car is sitting in the driveway?
Correct.
And this was a warning, it was an opportunity to correct. And one of the things, I would just say that since we've been talking about this, you know, I would hope that there has been a little bit more, um, police presence in the area to address some of your concerns. But with it comes a standard for all residents, then, you know, everything is on the table. Okay, so-
I can see a vehicle from a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Well, you know-
And even Jerry has admitted the fact that you cannot see a vehicle from a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Okay, I don't want to debate it back and forth, but one of our, um, the dormitories, one of our standards is that in our neighborhood, is that when cars are sitting there and they have flat tires, that we do say to the neighbors, you know, "Well, this persists." And, you know, you should call dormitories because that's one of the things that we're saying that in Southfield. Um, the ordinance is that the cars must be inoperable. Um, even if, and on the long drive, and I've actually been to your neighborhood quite a few times too recently. Just like, really understand what you could say because I've taken it seriously. You know, it's just drive-through, different times of the day, different times of the night. But they see what, you know, the traffic is, the traffic, it's the trash. I wanted to see it myself. Uh, because you've come to our meeting and so it, that's what I've done. But with that, also comes the expectation for all the folks who live there. So, thank you, uh, for coming forward to share this with us.
May I ask, what signs, um, were you talking about, the signs in your neighborhood? What were the signs?
Um, I'm not sure what the event was for, but I know one of the signs was, and it might have been a breast cancer because one of the signs was a gilders sign, but nevertheless, it was in my yard. And I don't recall anybody coming and asking me, "Can we stick a sign in your yard"? You know, I don't have a problem with it per se, you know, because of the cause and everything else. Not a problem with it. What I would appreciate, you coming and asking and saying, "Hey, would I stick a sign in there"?
The photographs that you gave us, it appears to be a sense that lots of entrance to Lawrence Tech property. Is there a sense?
No.
There's no-
Just two folks that sit there and make it look like something.
Okay, two folks there. So, have you seen any, is this one of the properties that Lawrence Tech owns?
This is a property that they own, but this is the area which, when I first came to you and I was telling you that we have the traffic coming through and we had been having the traffic coming through, that was the area. And I showed it to you in the first shot, first of the shots, and I was showing you Lawrence Tech, which you can see is a clear shot from the dormitory straight to our street.
So, have, um, this appears to be a heavy-
Yes, it is heavy machinery.
No, have you seen any heavy machinery going through here?
Um, there's heavy machinery up and down our street all the time. Time.
Have they started though?
No, it's just heavy machinery up and down our street time.
I, I, you know, we take comments that are made here that are truthful, um, or not truthful, but those, when citizens bring, um-
That's my home pitch.
Bring complaints and issues, um, we do hear you and we, uh, I do respect the citizens that come in and they're real issue. Um, this, uh, this is some of my follow-up on, I don't understand why you would not have any, put them up and down the street. They're not even building, building it.
They had trucks with trailers on them with, um, tractors, uh... I couldn't, I couldn't explain to you why they're going-
So, are you saying they normally go at this time?
No, I'm saying after that, after the last meeting, when the grass, if you look on the other side, it's pristine before they came in for you. There was nothing for that whole month or two months. But before that, there was a roadway going back and forth, primarily just for cars. This last one just happened to be that they took a piece of heavy equipment through there and left that state trench.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Cossack.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to ask the city administrator to, uh, follow through on this and, uh, find out what the heck's going on. Uh, there should be, um, other than this, uh, construction material close to here or heavy vehicles. And if there is, we can put a sign up in there and say, "No, uh, trucks," I, other than, you know, rubbish or deliveries. Uh, because there really has to be something happening over there that I'm not aware of. I go through there too and, uh, I, I just don't see that. I guess you have to live there to see it and, you know, I haven't caught it yet, but I know, you know, you have a picture of something heavy going through there, so I'd like to actually say this was staged, but I would like to know what's going on.
Uh, through the chair, we will review the situation and monitor it to find out, uh, what the heavy machinery is all about, uh, what this, uh, damage to the environment is about and, uh, also address the street sign and a few other things that were brought up, uh, and we will report back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair also, um, the city administrator. Um, Mr. Crowe, is it required that there is a, um, traffic path or construction that we normally have a designated area for trucks? I know we found it from other, I don't know if it's a highway, but I know sometimes in the building, uh, they actually have a path for the, for, um, the building trucks that are required. And it's not, um, Mr. Charette, I would think that that would be something that we would want to clear understanding of whether it's the established track path established for the, uh, building truck equipment.
Through the chair, uh, in regards to Mayor Mark Siskel, uh, we will gather, test force, if, to everyone in the room that we need with the expertise to, to effectively monitor the situation and, uh, do the right, uh, right thing here, make the, get the facts known and take appropriate action. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, I think that it's appropriate that we find out what really happened here. Um, there may have been, uh, landscape equipment, they brought into, uh, cut grass and stuff. It just, we've had an awful lot of rain that softened up the ground, so it may have been, uh, some places they normally brought the landscape equipment into. Because I believe this piece of property belongs to Lawrence Tech, so they may have used that as an entrance for their landscape equipment. But rather than jump to a conclusion, uh, we really find out what happened. And if it's a non-siteing thing, as long as that, bring somebody out there, straighten it out. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a request for recognition from Marvin Atlas. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. We have five minutes. Good evening, Mr. Atlas. I think I've been seeing you a long time.
That's true, although I did see you in the neighborhood, but...
Yes. Keep an eye on that.
Um, my name is Marvin Atlas. I reside in two-three-five-nine-five Raleigh. I'm here today to raise what I hope will be an issue important to you and may add, uh, to use the word standard, as well, should be the standard of performance and accountability for Comcast as a telephone service provider. Comcast, uh, telephone service has a intimate relationship with the ability for nine-one-one response. And in my case, as well as the case of anyone who has a security system which is, um, uh, which communicates with a sense of facial alarm, uh, the ability to, uh, affect that communication is directly related to the uninterruptibility of telephone service. I would like to briefly outline, uh, a description of a series of outages that occurred in my area uh, during the period approximately from the second week of September until mid-October. During that time, there were four outages, uh, of Comcast service. One of them lasted nearly a day. Um, I, I wasn't keeping, um, detailed records, so I'm not sure how long the second one lasted, but it was a matter of hours. Most recently, there were two outages in my area during a period of less than twenty-four hours. First one was on Friday evening at approximately ten P.M. on the fourteenth of October, an outage lasting, um, three to four hours. And, uh, the following day, at approximately six-thirty in the evening, there was another outage which lasted approximately three to four hours. Uh, I was told, I eventually found out, um, after bringing this request for recognition, which was referred to Joanne at, uh, at, uh, Cable fifteen, um, she was able to find out, uh, through her contacts at Comcast, uh, that the, that the last outage on Saturday was the result of a failure of a distribution outlet. Now, in conversations that I had with Comcast, which, um, really were not very fruitful because the Comcast, uh, service reps and supervisors that you get on the phone, um, are, um, polite, um, they, they generally know how to deflect, and, um, they don't respond to requests for, um, respond, fire up the phone chain, so to speak. Um, I, uh, I raised, uh, the question of whether or not the Comcast system has appropriate redundancy and workarounds to handle equipment failures so that there is not an interruption in service. I don't have an answer for that. Uh, I'm, I'm wondering if Comcast has an answer for that. Comcast was very aggressive in, um, promoting itself as a telephone service provider through its digital cable system. I've lived in Southfield nearly thirty-four years. During that period of time, um, I had conventional landline service through various incarnations of AT&T. From the time I moved here in, in November nineteen ninety-eight until January of this year, service never failed. Now Comcast, um, four outages in my area in the space of one month, two to twenty-four hours. So again, I'm simply raising the question of, what should be the standard of performance and accountability for Comcast as a phone service provider, given that, um, in effect, as a phone service provider, um, they take on the guise of public utility? Thank you.
Um, Mr. Atlas, uh, one other thing is, we used to be able to control the, uh, cable, uh, cable service under the most recent teleportation bill. Has been taken out of our hands, it's up in Lansing, but that doesn't mean that we won't forward your concerns to Comcast, try to work with them, find out what's going on in this, in this area. That's part of our, part of our responsibility, so, uh, I just, you know, if, if we have the leverage over them, it might be, uh, easier for us to get, to respond, but we're almost in the same position as you are. We're gonna, because we don't have any control over these, but we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can to find out what's going on.
May I, may I ask, does anyone have?
Oh, sure, or me?
Does anyone have leverage over them?
Uh, the, uh, well, actually, the customer has more control than we do.
The Michigan Public Service Commission has direct jurisdiction over their telephone...
I'll tell you quite frankly, that, that, um, customers have no leverage over them.
I mean, if you can...
Yes, I'm experienced over the, over the course of, uh, of the last several days. The only reason I finally received some response from Comcast was because, um, Joanne at, uh, Cable fifteen apparently has, um, some good contacts in their organization. And, um, I did receive a call finally from, uh, a woman in, uh, what is known as their fulfillment department. I'm not sure what that means, uh, you know, and I won't make jokes, uh, but, um, and we've been playing telephone tag for, for the last few days. But had I not, um, brought forth this request for recognition, which obviously was referred to Cable fifteen, I would not have heard from anybody at Comcast beyond the customer service advisory level. And again, I, um, state that, um, they're very polite, um, they're good at deflecting, um, they generally have, uh, little knowledge, uh, as far as the ability to respond. And, um, it seems to me that a company the size and scope of Comcast, with its resources, ought to be able to have enough redundancy in its system that interruptions of this nature simply don't happen.
Thank you. Uh, City Director, would you...
Yes, I have a concept on this. Let's look through the chair. Uh, I would ask, uh, that, um, Miss Gerling, who's a good writer, uh, find, uh, one of the top folks at Comcast that relates the concerns of this gentleman that were made public this evening, and hopefully maybe that would, that would help draw some attention to the issues. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Uh, you've worked for a utility company, and you know that people send letters to the Public Service Commission, put those in a file, where people ask for special things to, whether it be races or anything, they pull that file, and, and so I always, in my case, I always send a letter to Comcast, a letter to the Public Service Commission, and, uh, I haven't had any problems. But I guess they don't like to see that letter go to Public Service Commission.
Yeah, that's almost like you sent it to your boss.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item for, uh, consideration is a request for recognition by Stephanie English. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address to the record. We have five minutes.
Stephanie English, two-eight-seven-three-five-Santa Carlos, Southfield, four-eight-zero-seven-six. Um, I'm here at, uh, this council meeting, uh, this evening. It's the second request. I made, um, an initial request, uh, at the July meeting about the feasibility or the potential for the council or the, uh, city leadership to consider forming a code-compliant commission. I think that there is viability and a positive feasibility impact if, um, the council and the leadership looks at this particular type of commission. I've been to other committees, uh, or, uh, committee of the whole meeting, where the council members themselves have issues pertaining to the, uh, appearance of our neighborhood, the integrity of our neighborhood in terms of their appearance. I believe the code enforcement department has much power as the police and the fire department does in terms of ensuring our safety. The appearance of our neighborhood is very, very critical for us that we have somewhat of a return on our investment as homeowners, but also there's an impact in terms of the business appearance of our city. Um, I think that the code commission would actually help to have a little more bite with what the code enforcement department can do. So that means that Jack Barris' department would, has to be involved also. I've offered to, and I'm requesting, uh, respectfully, to meet with any of the council members or the department head regarding this issue. I have requested the meeting before and received no response, so I am here again to request it. Fortunately, there was the, uh, beautification award this evening. I was not anticipating coming, uh, to the council meeting to have that celebration here, but I think it's appropriate. Um, our code enforcement leader was here. I did go over this particular idea with him, and he does sanction it. I did, uh, mention it to our honorable mayor, again, in terms of the feasibility and the benefits of forming this type of commission. I think that, again, in terms of protecting the visual integrity of our neighborhoods, it is something to consider, and it has some weight and it has some merit. I have done a line-by-line analysis of all of our code enforcement compliances. Um, there are some that are good, uh, whether they were formed in the eighties or not, but there are some others that can be shored up, tightened up, and have a little more bite so that, again, the benefit to the city would be protecting the visual appearance, uh, which actually affects the bottom line. Each homeowner's bottom line and each business's bottom line, because the visual look and the appearance is very, very, very vital. Um, I don't know the process to go through. I'm again requesting a meeting. I can bring a, um, a feasibility plan to any of the leadership. You can take it from me and pass it on to another appropriate, uh, group for review. My recommendation would be to go to some of the, um, uh, homeowners association leadership, uh, people that have come to Mayor Lawrence's meetings or her roundtable meetings to get their input. I've already done a, um, analysis by going to people who haven't interested this to see if they would support this particular type of commission. I believe that if I stand at this podium, anyone watching this evening, that if they do support a code enforcement commission, that they do contact, uh, respectfully, the members of the council, or Mayor Lawrence, or, um, the leader of our code enforcement department. But it is something to look at again to protect the integrity and the look and the value of our city. Um, the last thing that I'd like to use, um, my minutes for, would be to encourage more people to vote on November the eighth. Um, I, in terms of looking at me, I am part of the majority population in Southfield as an African-American, so my message at the podium this evening is to encourage more African-Americans to vote in this election. Voter apathy can kill our city. Um, not being participated can kill our city. Um, it just so happens that being part of a dominant group, I do know, and I do get disappointed that more of the residents who are in my particular identity group do not vote. And I'm encouraged respectfully for them to participate in a process that's very vital. We're not gonna get all the support from Washington, so it's very vital that people not be complacent and that they do not view their, um, responsibility to be more aware and involved with the city processes. But if someone could ask me the question in terms of the processes or the proper procedures to go through to have consideration for this code enforcement commission, I would be, um, honored to follow those processes or to pass them along.
What I would, uh, Mr. President, uh, question, uh, just, um, we've talked about this, um, you can address me, and you're, uh, I, I think I'm hearing something a little bit differently tonight, um, with English than I, than in our conversation. Your, if I'm under, from what I understood, uh, from our past conversations, uh, this would be for an ad hoc committee, uh, like a charter commission, for instance, which has a beginning and an end, uh, that would review current codes and get citizen feedback.
That's correct, and also if necessary, because I believe we need to give good power to our department, you know, possibly bringing in the attorneys, uh, that, that area, because the code requires that, uh, legal oversight and that review. Because I would like to see some of the, uh, code requirements become more of a civil infraction so that tickets can be issued right away versus the con, condition continuing until they can go to court. So there's other recommendations that I have that there's not enough time here. So if our conversation, if I, uh, um, shored up our conversation, I just want more bite and, and better enforcement, and we have a time period. We can work on this over the wintertime so that, you know, there could be an effective launch for the spring. You know, use the winter quarter and the first quarter, um, of next year to possibly shore it up. If it's not feasible, then it's not something that's relevant or beneficial to the city, okay?
You know, I, uh, as I've indicated to you, I support the idea partly because, uh, it's an education. I, uh, as a, as a citizen of longstanding here and prior, uh, being on council, there were times where I would look at something and I'd say, there ought to be a law. Somebody ought to do something about this. And, um, I would go to Mr. Barris in his wisdom, and he'd tell me, uh, can that be unconstitutional? Uh, or, you know, but things do, but, uh, we see things, and again, uh, it goes back to this double standard, um, and appearances are a, a good part of our standard. Um, I think, um, there is an education to be had by reviewing the codes. Why, why we have the codes that we have? Uh, for instance, I think we should have codes, um, on bushes.
We can. You, you guys want to show.
And, um, but, you know, we, we had to debate years ago about, is it a foot of grass? Or is it nine inches, six inches? How long can a, a lawn be? Um, and what's...
Bushes is listed in the code.
Yeah.
It says grass and bushes. It's just what you decide to enforce and shore up.
Exactly. Um, what's an autogrown bush in your eyes is...
That's what commission can help with.
Yeah.
You can go and help with those gray areas. But at the same time, I'm prepared for any pushback. I've already done my due diligence in looking at the codes for the other cities. So I have something to offer in terms of their, uh, standards that really we could emulate. It would be ben, benefit for us, so I was prepared to, I have, no, I'm not prepared. I have already benchmarked other cities that have different codes that we possibly can pull in because they're best practices. And if it's working for another community, um, for example, there's some communities that don't allow any garbage cans or anything at the side of a house. Well, you know, there's like those gray areas on our books in terms of, okay, if it's behind the garage door, that type of thing.
Let me interrupt, because we can't form a committee tonight.
Oh, no, I'm not.
My question to you is, have you reduced your idea to rating?
Yes.
If you would give, uh, you know, your, your idea to the city clerk, she will make sure that we all get a copy of it.
Okay.
We can then discuss how we progress from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. But do you feel it has some merit?
Or me?
Do you feel it has some merit?
I don't know. I gotta say it first.
Well, just generally in terms of idea in terms of...
Well, I have to, I, I have to...
Talk about code issues.
I have to understand how, how you're coming at it, because we have code enforcement officers, and if this duplicates what we're doing, that's why they, if it was something different, then that, that's something that we need to take under consideration.
That's great.
But the idea is wrong.
Great, okay. Great, thank you.
I would say that I think it's a continual education process. We have new people in the city all the time, and, um, maybe where they lived last, it was okay. Not necessarily okay.
Really? Okay.
The thing I'd like sometimes is to be authorized to give tickets to people who run red lights. Well, I'm setting at the red light, they run red. But that's, that's one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Eric.
If I may, uh, just echo, uh, some comments that the English made about voting. Um, I sit here today, um, a woman African-American being elected to the community. And I can tell you, it was, uh, the community being very diverse votes came from all segments of the community. But there is a, um, stereotype in the label place on African-American voters that they don't vote, they don't engage. Um, sometimes the statistics prove true. And, um, sitting here, um, uh, in the position of being very much involved in politics and encouraging everyone to exercise their right to vote, the election coming up is, is never... Anytime there's an election and it has an impact on you as a person and the community, you should exercise that vote. And I, and I, I just wanna say, sometimes people sit at home, say, oh, it doesn't matter, things are good. Well, if you don't engage, things could get a lot worse. Uh, being educated about what your elected officials are doing, how they're representing you is extremely important. Being educated about what your elected officials are doing, how they're representing you, is extremely important. And I can say, every ethnic group has their story and their struggle. But African Americans have a story in this country of the struggle to have that right to vote. And I, I just think it's just really critical, I've just had an experience in another country, where women are just at the point where they're being allowed to vote. And you have people that sit at home in this country and don't exercise that vote. I can tell you the passion and the, the transformation that's happening in the thought process of a woman having the right to vote. And in this country, who went through tremendous struggle? And as an African American, I mean, it's been very well documented what we've been through. And shame on anyone that does not exercise that vote. And it, your black, white, green, orange, whatever, your religion, or however you hang your flag, if you're an American citizen, you should be active in that process, because it is not a given in other countries. It is something that other countries are dying and fighting for. And I'm very passionate about this. It, it, it bothers me and insults me, and sometimes I become enraged with people's advocacy about this precious right to vote that is so important for our democracy. So I, I just want to say, we say it kind of passive, but it's extremely important. And I, I don't like when African Americans go around because they won't vote. I don't like hearing that. It's insulting. It's disappointing. And we need to understand how important and embrace the need for our children, because our children watch us. If we sit at home and drink our Coke on election day, they get the impression that it's not important. So we all need to engage and understand how important that day of election is. And our numbers in Southfield, as we become, our numbers are being counted in the census. And so they look at, when is the vote turned? I think Southfield is one of the examples of how a community can live together in different ethnicities and religions and groups. And, you know, it's, it's ironic that when a community is majority white, there's not a lot of participation. We have passed the fifty percent mark, so everyone's watching Southfield. What is it going to become? What, what are the, the communities going to look like? Are you going to keep the property? Are your schools going to remain good? So we have to stay engaged, because I think we're a model for not only this region, but we're a model in the country of how people can live together, African Americans who are middle-class and educated, how we respect our property, we respect education, and we will have a vibrant city. And that we represent, we elect people who still represent us and who will bring value. So I, I, I'm the laboring official, but it's because I'm very passionate about it. I'm glad you brought that up. But please remember, the election is coming up November the eighth, correct? Hasn't changed. November the eighth. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, President.
Let me just point out that while you were away, that the President handled your role for you before. The immigration individuals that were made citizens the other day, this last weekend, on Friday morning, we had two hundred, I think it was two hundred and fifty-nine, largest crowd ever of immigrants that were, were sworn in as American citizens, fifteen countries. And, and each speaker was stating that those individuals who were there, the biggest thing that they had to do was to vote. And, and that'd be the thing that, that was expressed time and time again, including our Council President. And, and I, I just can't say it often enough that, that we, you know, have the privilege of voting. And here we are, the residents here, telling them that the most important thing to have in the freedom of this country is to vote. And we have a lot on the sidelines.
Those who made some comments about that during the House of Enforcement agenda, can I say? No, 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 no. You're right. It's about our own question. Um, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I am going to pull item CAC, the Global Leader Terminal, that's been pulled as a request to see the administrator in favor of the technical review of all the elements involved in study session format. According to this item will be scheduled for discussion in future made at home. So I'm pulling CAC. Are there any other items that any of the last they have pulled? Seeing no one saying anything, I will read the description of what we're going to be working on. I have made it the authorization to extend the current engineering contract through June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, under the same terms and conditions with Hubble World Inc. Incorporated, Bluefield Hills, Michigan, Archer Jones Leclun Incorporated of Lollone, Michigan, focusing primarily on projects currently in progress, and to engage the services of Tucker Young Jackson &amp; Tullman Incorporated of Detroit, Michigan, to provide engineering and design services to the city's water and sewer department and project evaluation services on an as-needed basis through June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. Funds are provided for these purposes in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Public Works Group budget. This request was reviewed at the October third, two thousand eleven Committee Home Meeting with a consensus that should be placed on tonight's agenda for formal consideration of approval. Consent Agenda item B, its replacement of, its replacement of five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars in previously approved energy branch projects under the superintendent control of the Southfield Building Authority, enabling the city to benefit from the specialized expertise of that commission on capital projects aimed at increasing, increased energy frequency at the Beechwoods Arena and improvements in civic center interior lighting. This item was reviewed at the October seventeenth, two thousand eleven Committee Home Meeting. As I mentioned, item C is a pull. Item D is authorization to broaden the scope of the sewer loan revolving fund to include hooking up to our water system. This assists homeowners with wells that are either failing or approaching failure to connect to our water system, or to assist those who may simply wish to modernize all systems. Funds are available within the initial seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars established, establishing a revolving fund in September two thousand and ten. This matter was reviewed at the October seventeenth, two thousand eleven Committee Home Meeting. Item E is approval of the annual agreement between the City of Southfield and Oakland County Road Commission for the city to continue to take responsibility for snow and ice removal on twenty-five point two miles of county roads located within the city of Southfield, ten mile, twelve mile, and lots of road. This ensures uniform snow and ice removal on all major streets within the city during inclement weather and in the interest of vehicle pedestrian safety, as has been provided under this agreement since two thousand and one. The Road Commission will reimburse the city ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars to cover the city's cost to provide these services that are above the level that would be rendered by the Road Commission. Funds are provided for this purpose in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve major streets of California. Item F is approval of the purchase of the Sierra Integrated Library System, upgrade from innovative interfaces incorporated of Emeryville, California, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty thousand dollars in two thousand eleven and twelve, and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five in the next full year, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Funds are available in the Equipment Revolving Fund for this purpose. This purchase will provide improvements in catalog access, checkout fees, and return processes for library patrons, as well as streamlined workflows of the library staff. Item G is award of contract with MICA Networks of Southfield to provide high-speed internet connecting connectivity services for the period November first, two thousand eleven through December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, for the low bid amount of two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which includes all installations and hardware costs. This will improve our capacity and bandwidth of providing a five percent reduction in our monthly rate. Funds are provided in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget for this purpose and will be provided in future budgets as council may approve. Item H is award of bids to provide for emergency snow removal services in the event of snow and ice conditions beyond the capacity of city's staff to handle alone. Four emergency standby snow removal contractors have been selected for the period November first, two thousand eleven through April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, based on hourly rates and their office equipment, employees, and experience. Paybacks of Trenton, Michigan, Perfections of Novi, Michigan, Landscape Services Incorporated of Clinton, Tulsa, Michigan, and Superior Graduate Inc., Escalade of Auburn Hills, Michigan. Funding in the not-too-insane amount of one hundred and ten thousand per full year is provided in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Public Works Budget and will be provided in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget as council may approve. Item I is approval of award to Great Lakes Power and Lightning of Casco, Michigan, and L.I. Building Services of Detroit, Michigan, for electrical services to the facilities maintenance department based on hourly rates and proven capacity to provide the service. This is for the one-year period of November first, two thousand eleven through October thirty-first, two thousand twelve, with options for two additional one-year periods. Annual expenditures are in a not-too-insane amount of forty thousand dollars on an as-needed basis. Funds are provided for this purpose in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Facilities Maintenance Budget. Item J is authorization for purchase of replacement portable radios for emergency communication under our State of Michigan Prophecy Purchasing Program in a total amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars from Motor Rowan Incorporated of Shawburg, Illinois. Funds are provided for this purpose in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Communications Budget. Item K is rescission of a subscription agreement that did not meet standard American contract review process and the award of subsequent contract to Metropolitan Real Estate Partners Global B of New York, New York for investment of a five percent portion of the assets of the Southfield Employee Retirement System in performance to the approved asset allocation model for the system and subject to periodic review by Gray and Company, the system's investment monitor and advisory firm. Item L is award of contract to WCM Investment Management Company of Laguna Beach, California, allocating seven point five percent from the assets of the Southfield Employee Retirement System for international investments in performance to the approved, approved asset allocation model and subject to periodic review by the system's investment monitor. Item M is approval of the extension of the current contract with Iron Round Information Management Incorporated for off-site stories and document shredding services through July thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, to realize an associated five percent annual budgetary saving of at least two thousand, sixty-eight dollars or five percent for the period. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I will extend the judgment A through M with the exclusion of C.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Paccasi and supported by Mr. Seiber, that we approve the Consent Agenda, A through M, except C. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye. Opposed, it's carried. The next item on our agenda, is this? A public hearing, GP twelve twenty-four P and GP twelve twenty-five P. It's really not a public hearing, because public hearing was held on this matter on July eighteenth, two thousand and one. Uh, Mr. Crowe, if you will handle this for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We ask the council's consideration of approving the following text amendments tonight. GP twelve twenty-four P is an amendment to Article Two Definitions of the zoning ordinance by adding new section five point four. This amendment specifically concerns defining childcare center or daycare center, defining childcare home, families, defining childcare home group, and defining childcare private home. Also, we ask your consideration for approving GP twelve twenty-five P, which is, which is an amendment to Article Five, Single Family Residential of the zoning ordinance by adding new sections, sections five point six-two, five point six-two A, and five point six-two B, respectively. These amendments specifically concern these permitted, these permitted subject to federal approval and required conditions for families with blue childcare homes. As you have previously stated, a public hearing was held at your July eighteenth, two thousand eleven regular meeting, and two study sessions were held before council in July and in October.
Mr. President, I would move the approval of the GP twelve twenty-four P, the amendment to the zoning ordinance, section five point four. Support? It's been moved by Mr. Seiber, supported by Mr. Paccasi, that we approve. GP twelve twenty-four P amended Article Two Definitions in section five point four. Uh, is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye. Opposed, we have a question.
Mr. President, we have both sections incorporated with one ordinance.
Oh.
So if you approve of the second section, then you can adopt one ordinance. But first, we need the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to include Article Five, Section five point six-two, and A to B.
Okay, so G people are going to vote A to B.
I approve it.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion? We'll vote again on that. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Now we need an ordinance.
Fifteen and D.
Fifteen.
Fifteen BDD.
Okay, counsel, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, I will add fifteen eighty-eight ordinance, fifteen eighty-eight introduce.
It's been moved by Mr. Paccasi and supported by Ms. Seymour, that we introduce, uh, ordinance number fifteen eighty-eight. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. We have no site plans for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. We have no site plans for this evening. The next item on our agenda is the council portion. Do you have some speculations to, uh?
Mr. President, I would move the approval of the expense report from Paccasi for attending the Detroit Economic Club Luncheon on September twenty-sixth. Can I also move a second one?
Well, why do we do one? Sorry. Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Seiber, supported by Ms. Seiber, that we approve the expense report for, uh, compliment Paccasi for the Economic Club Luncheon in Detroit, uh, September the twenty-sixth. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
Don't represent the people abstaining from voting.
Uh, item B, I will move the expense report from Paccasi for the Detroit Economic Club Luncheon on October eighteenth. It's been moved by Mr. Seiber, supported by Ms. Seiber, that we approve the expense report from Paccasi for the Detroit Economic Club Luncheon on October thirty-first. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
Does anybody need to be abstained?
You just say vote, you didn't.
I abstained too much.
Yeah. Okay, this is the council portion. If anyone has anything, if anyone would like to bring the board, uh, Ms. Seymour?
Yes, um, over the weekend, the City of Southfield joined with the International Institute of Greater Detroit and presenting here at the Southfield Pavilion, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the International Festival. And Friday was the inauguration, I'm trying, not inauguration, slay-in ceremony of almost three hundred new, uh, new residents, new citizens. three hundred new citizens. The weekend was outstanding in terms of the attendance, in terms of the vendors, items from all over the world, beautiful, beautiful items that I think for the past three years, this is the third year that this group has come back, we had few years where it wasn't um, it had traditionally held itself as many years, and then for few years, it wasn't done at all. But it was such an outstanding weekend. The finale on Sunday was Children Helping Children event, and to see all the children in their native costumes that participated in this amazing program was so awe-inspiring, the presentation that they gave as children, you can't, words can't describe it. And other people had tried to describe it to me because it used to be done, I think, before the final day, and I had never had an opportunity to say, but this time I did. And I want to tell you, if you haven't been to the International Festival here in Southfield, it's a must-see event. It's absolutely beautiful, it represents the entire region, actually represents the entire country. It's what this country is made up of, in terms of the various cultures that are settled here. We have groups of people that still practice their native dances, they're doing their special events, they're doing special programs. We had some totally new groups come in, just awe-inspiring, just absolutely awe-inspiring. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Numa Gosezal and his team, including people from the International Institute, put on such a program. I just hope everybody within sound of my voice and those who see this revival test of companies note next year around the same time, look for the International Festival and make a point to come here. People come from all over. It was just one of those things that makes you really proud to be an American and happy to be an American, and to see what all the other cultures have brought to this country of ours, and especially to see the children. It's just something so special. It was almost like being on vacation. It was tiring to be there all three days, but I will tell you that at the end of the day last night, I felt like I had taken a trip to another planet. It was just that beautiful. So I just want to compliment again all the committee that worked on this fabulous event and look forward to next year again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's carries.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to the citizens here in Southfield, for those of you who have been employed in Southfield for a while, obviously working such poor conditions, we're pleased to know that you're rolling some being repaired, part more than repaired, because it's not just something put on top of the particle and done properly. And I'd like to say that it's a piece of our, of our road structure here that is now owned by the city. And so it took a lot from the city administrators and the city council to be very persistent to have a voice with that open coming and all of that intersection. And we've had open coming in, and I've been from all of them, the administrator, the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, the city council, that we have a voice and we continue to speak up, that that intersection was positive. It was not up to the Southfield standard, carrying up our cars, people were not driving in that, in that area. It's one of the entrances to our city, and clearly when they entered Southfield freeway, someone said, how dare they not come up a little bit further and correct that intersection. So I was out there and did almost every day, and you know, I delayed five or ten minutes trying to get through the intersection, and I know that you are too, but it is well worth it, but I would like to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of it came with the persistence and other city council and administrators. Of having a voice and speaking up when things are not at the level that we know that they shouldn't be at all times. So if you want to let you guys know that after they're driving it, certainly should be all set again. That's a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A patch of those sheets that you have in your agenda is a resolution for the City of Funding and Yields in support of H.R. seventeen forty-two, Distant Community Access Preservation Act, which address is critical and immediate to access to local, regional government access channels. And I'd like to have that resolution in Southfield's name also to be sent to the Michigan Division and the National League of Cities as well.
Okay, I'll refer that to the city commissioner to get the real going.
Some of your information, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
It was true, I have one other thing, I would just like to wish Tommy the very best in travels and fun working with you. Love it, Ed. Because the President did say it was a journey, and it was a learning process and getting to know each other, and I think that we had greatly screwed each other, and I just wish you and your husband well and have a safe travel.
Thank you, Ed.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let the community know that yesterday at Hope United Methodist Church, we had a meeting with Joyce Johnson going over the election law and identification that is required or not required, how to vote, even if you do not have your state ID with you or a driver's license or something at the time that you come to the polls, as well as if you're faced with a challenge or challenger at the polls. And because we have the election coming up on November eighth, I found that to be very interesting, but it's going to be more important for next year when we have the presidential election. And this was just one of many. This was free and open to the public, and Ms. Johnson will be back in Southfield to do others, and I will do my best to bring that information forward so that you can attend those free and very important meetings, so that you'll know what's required, what's the election law provides, who can challenge you, and what your options are, who you can call in case, in case you are challenged at the polls. And again, also, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Gary for all she's given to me and working with her has been a joy and a privilege, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
I do have some things that I'd like to say. I'd like to give kudos to, also give kudos to the community relations folks, the Parks and Rec Department, and the Facilities Division for making the International Festival one as rememberable to everyone. And there were articles in the news, and I'd like to just mention a little bit of some of the things that some of the people said. And the mayor spoke eloquently about what she saw when she was in Saudi Arabia, about women now getting the right to vote. Also, heard Miss English and the mayor talk about folks that are more interested in staying home, watching television than coming out to vote. And it doesn't follow necessarily any particular culture or race. It just seems like there's an attitude of some people that it just doesn't make any difference whether they do it, and I think you need to change that. If I recall, right, when President Kennedy was elected, he was elected by one vote in each precinct, that if the person hadn't voted, he would not have been elected president. So, but here's the thing, that the people that have come from other parts of the world to the United States to become citizens, and if you stop and think, when they swear their allegiance to the United States, they have cut all allegiances to the country that they were born in or grew up in. And they came to the United States, and here's, here's one, and I think it's quite a, quite a statement. A twenty-nine-year-old native African sub-Saharan Ture had no parties she planned to attend. She figured she'd be too busy pursuing the American dream. Right after this ceremony, "I go back to school," said Ture, a second-year nursing student at Davenport University. Ture said she and her parents came to the United States in nineteen ninety-seven seeking opportunities and freedom, fleeing the Ivory Coast, which she remembers for no opportunities, no jobs, and is now a lock in the Civil War. For more than ten years, she lived in Atlantic Georgia before coming north to attend college, settling in Southfield to pursue her dream. That says a lot about Southfield, and it says a lot about people that come from other countries to settle in the United States. Here's another comment. Ashak Kumar Singh, twenty-nine, took the day off from his job as a PCP manufacturer for Saturn Electronics Corporation to become a U.S. citizen. Singh, who had been in the U.S. for five years, two months, said he hardly slept the night before because he was too happy. And he went on to say, the United States is the only country in the world that has the whole world living in it. So, those comments really came from the heart of those people that are new citizens, and if you were born here, you didn't have to do any of that to become a citizen, and all you had to do is become eighteen years old, go down to the Secretary of State's office, register to vote, and you had, they had to learn all about the United States, they had to take a test, they had to live here for at least five years before they were even eligible to begin to become a citizen. And yet, they did that, and then the last thing that they did was cut all allegiances to their home countries and to swear allegiance to the United States. So it's, it's important. And one of the things that, about voting, I remember seeing on television when the Africans first became eligible to vote, I saw one thing that people walked for five days and stood in a line a mile long because they had finally the opportunity to vote, and so many people had died looking for that, and it's one of the things that we just take for granted. Another item I'd like to just highlight is that Southfield wins the Oakland Award, and that's our Parks and Rec Department. And Southfield was recognized for having over seven hundred eighty acres of parkland and open spaces, and thirty-three sites throughout the city, including three hundred and thirty-three acres of dedicated nature reserves, particularly Southfield's Carpenter Lake Nature Reserve, which won a two thousand and ten Park Design Award from the Michigan Recreation and Parks Association. Southfield was also recognized for partnering with OCP EBS on a Rouge Green Corridor, Urban Habitat Conservation and Stewardship Project that was created to protect and improve the Rouge River watershed. And it goes on, I'm not going to read it all, but it, it says that, well, we're doing things, other people are noticing and taking a look on that and are giving us a reward because we are, we think, and so do other people, award winners. So, with those two things, I have one other thing, and that is, keep in mind, the Monday after Thanksgiving, the Southfield Goodfellows, who'll be selling the newspapers, and they're asking for volunteers for just a few hours, I believe it's like from six o'clock to ten o'clock in the morning, and you gather at the ice arena, and remember I talked about the cops and their donuts? Well, cops will be there, but the donuts will be there. And coffee, before you go out, you'll get either a baseball bat or a Santa Claus hat in a bucket, and you'll be assigned a location to go out and raise funds for those people that are less fortunate, and the slogan for the Goodfellows is, "No child without Christmas." So, they raise, they raise funds so that children that would normally not have a happy Christmas can have something. And I've done it for a number of years, and it's interesting, as I stand there collecting coins and dollars, that the people that come by and donate that said, "When I was a kid, the Goodfellows was there for me, and I'm just giving back." So if you have some time, the Monday after Thanksgiving, please come out and volunteer for the Goodfellows, they'll make you feel great. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the court, oh, the mayor, I'm sorry, the mayor. Then we have an extra, the statutory court for the mayor for the MML Michigan Association Mayor's Meeting at Court Huron. It is not Saudi Arabian, it was made by somebody else. So, I do need a motion. Move the defense report and bring the bar for her attendance at the Michigan Association Mayor's Meeting. Good point. It's been moved by Mr. Seibert, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the statutory court for the mayor for the MML Michigan Association, State Association of Mayor's Meeting. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next item is...
Is that made at the President?
Oh, is to open the floor for the mayor to speak.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize and celebrate the St. John's Media Church, who just recently celebrated their eightieth year anniversary. It was a very festive occasion. The Gold Zone, as I told them when I presented, proclamation for them has been a marker for our city, and we're very proud of the congregation and all that they have done for us, so again, publicly say, happy eightieth anniversary to St. John's Media. And I just wanted to say that I had the wonderful opportunity to travel to Saudi Arabia. I was picked by the, by the king of Saudi Arabia, one of five mayors to travel to Saudi Arabia. The trip was paid for by the Royal Embassy, and it was a yearly event that happened where they bring different people. After nine eleven, there was a major cutoff of people coming to Saudi Arabia or the dialogue of relationships. Saudi Arabia's been an ally of the United States, and they're doing relationship training. There's opportunities for jobs, restaurants, partnerships, which you'll be hearing more from me about. I've already got emails back about how they want to partner with you more and looking at how they can create jobs and how to develop. But it was a wonderful opportunity, and I just want to say that we must think globally because I can tell you about Saudi Arabia, they're benchmarking our best practices, they're moving forward, they're building five brand new cities that are all lean certified by energy, with latest technology, infrastructure, roads. They're worried about the same thing about educating their children. Remarkably, they, they invest twenty percent of their national budget in education. There are some things where we are, we talk what we do, and we have been the leader, and I have to say, I agree with President Obama, that we do not second us. We will be followed. We have been a leader and been a part that others subscribe for, and we must invest higher in the surface of education of our children and provide different freedoms, protective freedoms that we have. So it's, it's good, it's, it's just one last thing I wanted to say, their, their equivalent of our Congress, seventy percent have PhDs, sixty percent were educated in the United States. percent have PhDs, sixty percent were educated in the United States. So they're, they're educated and others were educated in other parts of the world. Then they come back home and they govern their city, their country. And so we must, I was thankful for our opportunity and able to, been able to afford it, but to give the invitation to five of the mayors from other parts of the country and the government to, to run the thing. And it, it's, it's, it puzzles you thinking about how passionate we need to look at our future and where we are in investing, not only in our infrastructure, but in our youth, but to be more passionate about education. So I am, I'll be talking to you more about those partnerships. Glad to have that opportunity. And it was amazing to talk to individuals in Saudi Arabia that I know in Southfield. They were educated at Michigan State or U of M, and they were very familiar with Southfield because we are a business hub and they could, they could talk about it. So that was quite impressive to be from the other side of the world, that people know our state and town. I'm glad to have that opportunity and glad to be home.
Mr. President, there's something to tell you. I know you had your time because all went on five hours a barrel a day.
They pay ninety-three cents a gallon for oil, for gasoline in Saudi Arabia, ninety-three cents.
So they have to raise the price well so they can get some of their money back, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
You have a fix?
Good times, yeah, it's a lot of money off.
Right. Is it?
I actually use samples from Campbell, so that was remarkable.
Okay, well, no hot sauce.
Yeah, no hot sauce, take that order.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything for the agenda?
I want to thank you for the opportunities of, for service that you councils provided this evening. We will share them with the staff and expect an aggressive response. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is clerk, treasurer, planner, assessor, and engineer. We do have some expense reports to act on this evening. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the city clerks' expenses for Grand Rapids' MML annual convention.
That's court?
Court.
It's been moved by Mr. Patafsi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we, that we approve the extra report for our city clerk for the MML annual convention. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move the city clerk's expenses for the election workshop in Spring Lake, Michigan.
Good point.
It's been moved by Mr. Patafsi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the extra report of our city clerk for the two thousand twelve election workshop in Spring Lake, Michigan. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move the extra report for the city treasurer for the MTA thirty-third annual fall conference in Austin, Michigan.
That's court. It's been moved by Mr. Patafsi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the extra report of the treasurer for the MTA annual fall conference in Madison. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried. Mr. Planner, you have my opinion.
Thank you for the chair. As you recall, the council on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, directed the planning and the legal departments to investigate and recommend regulations regarding wind turbine ordinance. At that time, you established a moratorium for a period of one hundred and twenty days on the processing of applications for these facilities. That moratorium recently expired. Planning and legal department have conferred with each other and have a draft ordinance that we like to report through the planning mission and public hearing and bring back to council sometime at the beginning of the new year. Thus, we were requesting an additional one hundred and twenty day extension retroactively to October fourth to allow us to ample time to hold the study sessions and conduct the public hearing prior to making a recommendation back to council.
Mr. President, I move the extension of the moratorium, retroactive to October first.
Fourth.
I'm, I'm sorry, October fourth, for one hundred and twenty days ahead, as it relates to wind turbine.
Good point.
It's been moved by Mr. Cyber, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the extension of the moratorium with regard to wind turbine, retroactive to October fourth for one hundred and twenty days. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried. Do you have anything to schedule?
Nothing.
Nothing scheduled. We do have an urgent...
Could I just say something, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I know it's been discussed that there is an election November eighth. I just want to remind everyone that the hours are from seven in the morning until eight in the evening. If for some reason you are unable to attend the polls on Tuesday, November eighth, the city clerk's office will be open on Saturday prior to the election. That date is November fifth. You will be there from eight in the morning until two in the afternoon. That is the last day that is yet to be allocated in the building. So I encourage anyone who is not available to vote on November eighth, to either call our office or stop by the Saturday prior to the election. Also, if you have time, I'd like to encourage all the residents to come out and join us on election evening. And, you know, you'll be excited as the results come in. However, if you are not available, we will be posting the results on our website that evening. And for those of you who may not be familiar, the website is www.cityofsouthfield.com. And they hopefully will be posted early. And last, Ms. Garrison, I'd just like to wish you, you know, happiness. I can't believe that you've been away from your husband for one year. It's been, it's been wonderful working with you, and thank you for your service to the Southfield.
Mr. President, I forgot to announce my, my colleague, my board, a woman that has had numerous leadership positions in other areas, and I applaud you for that. The council selects the values of people, and then it lets us be individuals, and we truly define that. I hope that your journey will bring you back home, but to carry your husband, so we made a major sacrifice for him, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay. Moving into the ordinances, we have two ordinances to act on, to enact.
I move that we enact ordinance number fifteen eighty-six.
That's court?
Court.
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Mr. Patafsi, that we enact ordinance number fifteen eighty-six. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enact ordinance number fifteen eighty-seven.
Good point.
It's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we enact ordinance number fifteen eighty-seven. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor saying aye. Opposed, it is carried. That is the end of our agenda for this evening, and I would like to take the last moment to say to my colleague, Ms. Garrison, congratulations on graduating.
On my first term.
Yeah, right. But what I said at the podium, I believe, and I will reiterate that, that it has been an occasion for celebration for everyone, that we grew together, and I wish you the very best.
Well, thank you. And once again, we can say, I have been, I will, and my privilege, in coming to the last year, and it's a privilege to my honor and my privilege.
Okay, thank you. With that, the committee is adjourned.